Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the July 27th, 2023 regular meeting of the Moraine City Council to order at 6:00. Rule call, please.
Mrs. Allen?
Here.
Mr. Miller? Mr. Dougherty?
Here.
Ms. Marcus?
Here.
Mr. Burchett?
Here.
Mrs. Witt?
Here.
Mayor Murphy?
Here.
And I'd like to make a motion to excuse Councilman Miller from this meeting.
Rule call, please.
Mrs. Witt?
Yes.
Mr. Burchett?
Yes.
Ms. Marcus?
Yes.
Mr. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mrs. Allen?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Yes. And now if everyone would join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Council has copies of the July 13th, 2023, regular meeting minutes. Does anyone have any changes or corrections? Hearing none, the minutes are submitted as approved. Now, we will, we have no special presentations tonight, so we are going to go into Finance Committee. Anything to report?
No report.
Thank you.
Finance Director, anything to report?
No report, thank you.
Committee of the whole, anything to report?
We had a meeting on July 13th, and then there will be a meeting following this meeting this evening. Thank you.
City Manager or Acting City Manager, anything to report?
No report.
Law Director, anything to report?
No report, Mayor, thank you.
And we are now going to do a note of office.
I'd like to introduce Ben K. Hill. He's our newest lieutenant. He's one of our hard-time success stories. He started with us at May of 2014 as a hard-time firefighter. We hired him full-time in 2017, also in May. Ben's from Cooper Heights, with the Wayne High School. He attended college at Sinclair, where he obtained his associate's degree in fire science in the MS. He likes to spend time with his family and go to sporting events. He's George Knight, vice parents for Kim and Sean K. Hill. His wife's name is Gabby, and he has a son named Gavin, who was around about 16 months old. Ben will tell you, he's a hard worker, and he's dedicated for this job. Ben K.
That I support.
That I support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And obey.
And obey.
The laws.
The laws.
The United States.
The United States.
And the state of Ohio.
And the state of Wyoming.
That I will.
That I will.
In all respect.
In all respect.
Observe the provisions.
Observe the provisions.
Of the charter.
Of the charter.
And ordinances.
And ordinances.
Of the city of Moraine.
City of Moraine.
And will faithfully.
And will faithfully.
Discharge the duties of Fire Lieutenant.
And discharge the duties of Fire Lieutenant.
Okay. (applause) 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 (applause)
(inaudible)
(laughing)
(laughing)
(laughing) (laughing) (laughing) (laughing) (laughing) (laughing) (laughing) (laughing) (laughing) (laughing) (laughing) (laughing) (laughing) (laughing) (laughing) (laughing) (laughing) (laughing) (laughing) (laughing) Oh, he wants his dad. That's what he wants. He wants his daddy. (laughing) 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 Just like that. Okay. (laughing) 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 We'll now go into the Mayor's Court for the month. For the month of June 2023, the gross revenues for Mayor's Court was $23,625 after various expenses and disbursements. A total of $17,762 was deposited into the General Fund. And now we will go into business.
There are no ordinances. We have Resolution 7958-23, a resolution authorizing the renewal of property and casualty insurance coverage through the Public Entities Pool of Ohio, PEP, at a cost not to exceed
This resolution approves the renewal of the city's property and casualty insurance coverage. This cost is a budgeted item that will be paid from the General Fund. Motion to approve.
You've heard the motion. Is there any questions or comments? Rule call, please.
Mrs. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mrs. Witt?
Yes.
Mr. Burchett?
Yes.
Ms. Marcus?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Yes.
Resolution 7959-23, a resolution authorizing the city of Moraine to accept the donation of a replica of the 1913 Aerobote Model G from Wright Seaplane Base Incorporated.
This resolution allows the city to receive a donation from the Wright Seaplane Base Club of a Wright Seaplane replica to be displayed in the city. Motion to approve.
You've heard the motion. Any questions or comments? Rule call, please.
Mr. Burchett?
Yes.
Mrs. Witt?
Yes.
Ms. Marcus?
Yes.
Mr. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mrs. Allen?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Yes.
Resolution 7960-23, a resolution approving an amendment to Moraine Charter Section 3.5, salaries.
This resolution approves a change to the charter to be voted on by the electors of the city of Moraine and would increase the salaries of the mayor and council members. Salaries have never been increased for the mayor or council since Moraine became a city in 1965. On two different occasions, we have had the opportunity to put this on the ballot, and both times we have said no. Once was when the city was in financial disarray, and the other time was when we had the income tax on the ballot, and we did not feel the time was right. But we do feel now is the time for those council members that will come after us. So, motion to approve.
You've heard the motion. Any questions or comments? Rule call, please.
Mrs. Witt?
Yes.
Mr. Burchett?
Yes.
Mrs. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Dougherty?
Yes.
Ms. Marcus?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Yes.
Resolution 7961-23, a resolution approving an amendment to Moraine Charter Section 3.10, annual audit.
This resolution approves a change to the charter to be voted on by the electors and would update the language to reflect the current audit procedures in the city. Motion to approve.
You've heard the motion. Any questions or comments? Rule call, please.
Ms. Marcus?
Yes.
Mr. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mrs. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Burchett?
Yes.
Mrs. Witt?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Yes.
Resolution 7962-23, a resolution approving an amendment to Moraine Charter Section 5.8, absence or disability of city manager.
This resolution approves a change to the charter to be voted on by the electors and would clarify the procedure to appoint a city officer to perform the duties of the city manager when the city manager is temporarily absent. Motion to approve.
You've heard the motion. Any questions or comments? Rule call, please.
Mr. Burchett?
Yes.
Mrs. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Marcus?
Yes.
Mr. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mrs. Witt?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Yes.
Resolution 7963-23, a resolution approving an amendment to Moraine Charter Section 10.12, annual report.
This resolution approves a change to the charter to be voted on by the electors and would clarify the purpose of the annual report and establish the difference between the annual report and the comprehensive financial report. Motion to approve.
You've heard the motion. Any questions or comments? Rule call, please.
Mr. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mrs. Witt?
Yes.
Mrs. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Marcus?
Yes.
Mr. Burchett?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Yes.
Resolution 7964-23, a resolution approving an amendment to Moraine Charter Section 10.13, management of funds.
This resolution approves a change to the charter to be voted on by the electors and would provide consistency with Section 6.4 of the charter regarding the duties of the Finance Director. Motion to approve.
You've heard the motion. Any questions or comments? Rule call, please.
Mrs. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Dougherty?
Yes.
Ms. Marcus?
Yes.
Mrs. Witt?
Yes.
Mr. Burchett?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Yes.
And now we have any persons that are appearing before council? Please come to the podium and state your name and address, please.
I think y'all know me, but Eric Watts, and I live on Outdoor Road. I'm here today because I wanted to ask the tornado siren that used to be in our plat. I understand what we've noticed over the last couple of years, that it has been removed, and I want to know the reason for that. And then I also want to ask, I would like it to be reinstalled, because the one that is up on the hill, outside or inside, you cannot clearly hear it.
Sure, I'll speak about it.
I was looking for an email. I just sent City Manager Davis about that. You must have contacted one of the council or him about that. So, so back in 2000, when I took the deputy chief's position, the city already had a plan through Chief Sigler, updating all the sirens in the city. The five old, what they called neighborhood sirens, which is one of them that you're referring to, they were dated from like the 50s and 60s and 70s. They were really old sirens. So, the city had a plan to cover the entire city. They had annexed a lot of land to the west that had no siren coverage at all. So, the overall plan was to put six brand-new sirens that are computer-operated. They report, actually send me emails every night to tell me they're operating, they're battery-operated, so that when a storm comes through, which you can imagine, if we do get a storm, the power goes out, those sirens that used to be in your neighborhood wouldn't work if the power's out. So, we went to a much more up-to-date system that covered the whole city. You know, I would have to be there, I guess, when we test them at your residence to see if they can be heard. But I do want you to know, they're made for outdoor.
And I understand that.
Only. I mean, they're not, you know, if you're inside, you're expected to have during bad weather a TV or a radio on to hear those alerts, but they're only rated for outdoor.
And I understand that, and I appreciate that.
Parts were no longer available for them to be repaired, and then the other problem was, we had updated how we set off the alerts for those sirens, and those did not match it, so we were having to keep two systems up and running. Like I said, with the new system, it reports to me every morning. Like I said, I get an email that they're up and running. The old system, we had to physically go out there and stand by there and watch them run to make sure they did run. So, it was just an updated thing to cover the whole city was why they were replaced.
And I appreciate that, and I do understand what you're saying, but I can promise you, even if we were outside, we would not have heard the last one that happened. And if you're telling me that you can hear it outside, I should be able to hear it if my windows were opened.
I would think so, yeah. But like I said, I would have to be there.
I would like for you to look into...
And there is a huge difference of like a nice, bright, sunny day. You know, I'm sure there's times when you hear railroad trains go through more loudly than other days, because wind direction will keep the sound from penetrating. You know, if it's a bad storm and part of the storm's already here before they set off the alert, you may not hear it inside your resi... I don't, I don't know, but I do know that they're all rated for one-mile radius, and I supplied the city manager a map that actually shows the coverage, that it does cover the whole city.
Well, I guess what I'm going to ask then is to maybe relook at it again to promise that we would be able to hear it in this area.
I mean, that would, we can look at that to see if there's an issue. If there is an issue, then obviously it would have to go to council and be approved before we could purchase any more sirens.
So, how long would it take to get an answer on that?
Well, so, when we do our next test, which will be the first of the next month, which will be August, what is that, 8?
I think so.
Like that, the first Monday of the month, because the first is Tuesday, so it'd be the following Monday. You know, I'll be down at the, by your residence, and we'll just see if I can...
Test it out.
See if I can hear it or not. If we can't, then we'll have to figure out what's going on.
Yeah, because I know when it did happen, I wasn't the only one that said they could not hear it. And I don't feel like it's just on that side of the river, it's on this side too. So, I just want to make sure that our residents are protective and that too. So, I appreciate your time with that, and I will, anxiously, we need to hear back.
I will say, just to bring up one thing, and I'm sure you understand this, I receive phone calls of people who complain that they're too loud also, just so you know. You can't, we can't please any, everybody, I know.
Yeah, but it's not like it's something that goes off every day.
I get that, yeah. Oh, trust me, I know.
It goes off when it needs to go off.
I try to explain that, and they want to call the dispatch center and say, well, why are they leaving them run for so long? It's like, well, they got a test period they got to go through.
Right, because it's either be safe or sorry, so...
That first Monday in the morning.
All right, well, thank you.
Yep.
Chief?
Chief?
Chief, you said that they're only intended to be heard when you're outside.
Yes.
What about nighttime when people are busy?
So, again, you know, we recommend the weather alert radios and things like that. Most of your phones, if you have them updated, they have alerts that come right to your phones now. If you have that set on your phone, it's amazing how loud that is. But, yeah, I mean, they're not made for, to, because, you know, people have different designs in their house. When I put new windows in my house, I can't hear street noise anymore. So, I don't know how we would design something to make sure it penetrated people's houses, not knowing how their houses are built.
Other than a more intensive coverage area, more sirens in different areas?
Hey, it's money. We can put as many sirens as council will let me. (laughing)
Well, as a council member, I'm all for that, because that tornado that hit at midnight, think if those people would not have heard it, how many of them would have died? So, I think whatever it takes, council needs to address getting more than ever. I can hear it, and I did get new windows, new door, new roof, I got new everything, and I can hear the siren no matter where I am in my house, and I feel like every resident should have that same protection. So, I, for one, will go for that.
I understand on steps of the city building here, you hear our church bells playing instead.
Exactly, I can too.
Can't hear the siren from inside my house.
And it could be something, like you said, we'll have to listen to it, but it could be something as easy as raising the level of that siren up with those buildings and the new houses being developed there. Maybe it's keeping that sound from coming down the hill there. I mean, we'll just have to look at it.
I'd like to piggyback off of what Mrs. Watts said, and I can't hear ours either. I used to be able to hear them with no trouble at all, even thought they were a little bit loud, but I thought, good, it'd be a safety thing. But the last one, I barely heard a hum and didn't know what it was, and my windows were open, and they were the old windows from 1951. So, I mean, I don't see the point in having the sirens if all they're going to do is alert people that are outside, most of who would be in a car or something, and we're going to leave the people in the houses with no warning.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Did that answer all your questions?
Somewhat. I already logged, so...
Okay. Now, we will go into any other business. Fire Department, anything to report?
No, ma'am, no report.
Police Department, anything to report?
National Night Out is, as the sign says, Tuesday, August 1st, from 6:00 to 8:00. Come out and enjoy time with your police department, your fire department, and your neighbors. Thank you, that's all I have.
Building and Maintenance Department, anything to report?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Street Department, anything to report?
No report, thank you.
Parks and Recreation Director, anything to report?
Yep, tomorrow night is the third movie night in the park. Starts in dark, so if you want to come out, it's Batman Lego, or Lego Batman, I'm sorry. And then also Tuesday is going to be a busy day at the rec center. This year, we had 267 kids sign up for the school supply giveaway, and they will be picking those up between the hours 11:00 and 1:00, so.
Okay. Community Develop Director, anything to report?
Thank you, yeah, a couple of things tonight. First, a quick update on street light maintenance. I know that has been a topic we have discussed here recently, and we did get a report back on the status of things this week, so just wanted to let you know that most of the projects have been completed and should be in pretty good shape. Unfortunately, one of the last ones to come online, which will be Dorf Drive, the work that was done to bore underneath and put in an underground wire, that failed. That process failed. We were told that on Tuesday, so they will be coming back to reinstall that, and hopefully we are at the top of the list. I understand that we're getting a little behind on this, and they will be active on it very quickly. So, again, we're still working on it. Unfortunately, one of the rehabilitations did not go well for us there. So, that's street lights. Fiber installation, some folks in Oak Point today may have noticed that fiber installation started. We were aware of that project, and we're working with the contractor to get that underway. We were not aware that they were starting today, so when we got some phone calls as to what was going on, we did go out and check on things, and we have asked the contractor to stop their work at this point. They actually did not complete all of the paperwork and notifications that we were looking for, and so we've asked them to stop, complete this work, and make sure that we're all on the same page, we know what's going on. We have gone back and want to let everybody know that they are supposed to stay in the right-ofways and in any easements, so they should not be getting into areas that aren't part of that structure. We are talking to them about notice and whether or not they did get a notice out through the mail or any kind of electronic update. We're not sure about that, we're still getting feedback, but we will urge them to try and get some kind of notice out when they are allowed to resume here in the next week or so, and we will certainly get something out through Facebook and some of the webpage notification systems. So, again, apologize for anything that's gone on with that, but we are working through that, that process. Third thing, as part of the comprehensive plan update, we have gone through and talked with and notified our neighbors to see if we can get some interaction and feedback on some of the things that we are proposing. I was contacted by the County Engineers Office to come down to discuss the Main Street Bridge going over 75 and the river. That is one of the things that we wanted to adjust. So, we were on the same page as them. They, again, said, we heard you were doing a comprehensive plan update, and we would like to be part of that and begin working with you, so we're having a secondary meeting tomorrow, and then they will be coming into the city building in about three weeks to talk with us, mainly regarding the sidewalks. The condition of the sidewalks is deteriorating. It's not the best situation to begin with, in my opinion, just from that standpoint. So, we're going to be talking about how we can adjust the situation, work on it. One of the realities is, is the sidewalks are deteriorating fairly quickly, and so they are looking to get some kind of plan in place in the next six months to a year so that we can begin looking for funding and begin looking for ways to get that accomplished in the next round, which is about five years away. In the meantime, and here is really the update, the county will be going through and welding steel plating on top of the concrete portion of the sidewalks. So, it's a steel curb on both sides, then it's a concrete flat sidewalk area, and then that connects into steel. They are going to put steel plating on top of all that, weld it down, it won't be mobile, there won't be any click-clack, but they just wanted to let us know that they are concerned about the situation, and as a way to kind of mitigate our safety potential over the next four to five years, they're going to go ahead with that. So, we will see work being done on the bridge, they're hoping before the 1st of October. So, this is going to happen fairly quickly, but I just wanted to let you know, there will be some additional work done out there. But again, I think the process is working, and they would really like to talk to us about where we'd like to go and what we would like to do with the bridge. So, this is the first step, I think, in a nice process to upgrade that. So, last update, number four, the existing conditions report. Talked about this at the last committee of the whole meeting, and we have completed getting feedback back from all of our partners. We got a lot of good information on things that needed to be clarified or adjusted, and so we are ready to publish those. So, I will be sending to you the PDF of the existing conditions report, which has all the nice graphics and things that we were talking about last time, as well as the complete survey results that were done. So, you'll see that same thing. I gave you one question, you'll get all 43 questions, and the compilation of that. So, I'm going to send the PDFs of those to you tomorrow, so you can look those through and begin to kind of assess, you know, what the information is communicating to us. If you would like to have a printed copy of those, I can get that taken care of for you, if you just let me know, either notify the clerk or myself or anywhere, we will get those taken care of, and I can get those out to you at some point next week. So, that'll be coming to you. You will get an email, and that's what it'll be, they're fairly sizable files, so we'll have to figure out how I'm going to, have to work with our RT people to reduce the file size and get you a nice copy out there. But that'll be coming out tomorrow, so you'll see that email. That's all I had, unless there's any questions or anything.
On the bridge?
Yes, ma'am.
They talked about the new fencing, because remember, that was...
Everything will be included. Everything will be included. I went through a quick review of our thoughts on the comprehensive plan and where we wanted to go, connecting the east and the west side, really enhancing Main Street as a corridor for the community and bringing some things. They had to listen to me for a few minutes on what our goals were, and that was one of the things. We really would like to work on the branding, work on some of the things that go along with that and really upgrade the bridge. So, yeah, that's all a part of the conversation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Acting City Manager, anything else to report?
Nothing else, thank you.
Law Director, anything further to report?
No, Mayor, thank you.
Finance Director, anything further to report?
Yes, today I attended the Montgomery County Auditor Local Officials briefing on the twenty-twenty-three property revaluations. Moraine is set to get a, on average, a thirty-six point six percent increase in property values. There is a article in the Dayton Daily News today about the property tax increases, and I would just caution people to read that carefully. It can be confusing, it can be a little misleading when it comes to, like, what each person is going to pay in property taxes. Property taxes are very complicated, unfortunately, and that's just, that's the system that we have. So, to fund most of our public agencies in the state. So, I would just want to, you know, remind people and tell people to, you know, talk to the county if you have questions or concerns or want more information on how they got to their numbers. They will be sending out letters to property owners with your specific value for next tax year. That will be coming out in the next week or so. There will be information with those letters on, you know, if you have questions or concerns, there will be a period to refute those values if you want, and there will be instructions in there as well. So, we may get phone calls here at the city, but, you know, we don't handle property taxes, and so we just tell people to call the Montgomery County Auditor's Office, and they are prepared to help you out. So, just wanted to let everyone know about that, that's coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Clerk of Council, anything to report?
I have nothing, thank you, Mayor.
Ms. Allen, anything to report?
I'd just like to urge everyone to come out for the National Night Out Tuesday evening. It's always good, I hear it's going to be even better this year.
Ms. Marcus, anything to report?
Yeah, I'm going to kind of piggyback here on the Finance Director's comment about property taxes. If someone does not feel that their property appraisal is correct, they do, can go to the Montgomery County Auditor's Office, and they can file to have them reduced. I've done it twice, both times successfully, but you just have to have all your information together to do it. Other than that, I just wanted to encourage everybody to come out for National Night
Out on August first.
Ms. Witt, anything to report?
Ditto on National Night Out. It is a great thing, so if you have kids, make sure you bring them out. I would also like to encourage everyone to vote August eighth, but before you go vote, make sure you know what you're voting for. It's, they've tried to really muddy it up, so you really have to read it to understand it, but please go vote, that you're right. Thank you.
Can I jump in real quick? Sorry. They are bringing the machines Tuesday, so, and it will be in Meeting Room A. It will not be in the gymnasium, it will be in Meeting Room A.
So, will all of Moraine be voting there?
That I can't answer, I just, we are, we are a host facility for that day.
Okay.
I've not gotten anything, that's my half, the one half of my ward, Ward Four A, as far as I know, still has to go to Kettering to vote. I've not gotten anything saying otherwise.
Yeah, I, other than that, it's handled by the Board of Elections, we're just...
Yes, I'm just saying that's maybe so people won't get confused, but it's like the northern part of my ward.
Yeah.
As far as I know, it's still going to the church in Kettering to vote. The southern part of my ward, I think, goes to the pain rec center.
Yeah.
How they came up with this, I don't know, but Miami Township is going to the church in Moraine to vote. I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know the thought behind that one.
Mr. Darty, anything to report?
Ditto on pretty much both comments about the voting August eighth, you know, that's very important that we get out for that one. It's a very, very important one, and I encourage everyone to get out the vote. National Night Out is one of the city's biggest events, I really enjoyed it. Everyone does a great job, looking forward to that, and I encourage everyone to come out, and that's all I have.
Mr. Burchett, anything to report?
Yes. Last Wednesday, I attended the board meeting, monthly board meeting at the MVCC. At this time, I'd like to make a little talk here about what the MVCC provides to member cities. They provide joint contracts for street lighting, municipal facility electric supply, pavement marking, code red emergency notification system, Dayton MIS database used by police departments, and electric aggregation. They operational oversight and programming of four cable access channels, equipment and training to volunteers interested in producing their own programs and free classes for students, and channel time for local schools and universities. They provide live gavel-to-gavel coverage of city council meetings in all eight member city. MVC staff works closely with city staff members in producing programming related to beautification awards, local concert, and community festivals and parades, broadcasting of special public meetings, as well as programming on health, wellness, and local history, et cetera. They also provide collaborative training programs for all member affiliate communities. Much of the training available to city employees and elected officials is done at minimal cost to the member communities. Funding for the operators, operations of the Tactical Crime Suppression Unit, which primarily focuses on criminal activities across jurisdictional borders. Coordination of meetings and sharing of information between member and affiliate city administrators, human resource directors, public work officials, and public safety administrators. Access to a production incident command vehicle for use of remote shots or emergency scenes. Website creation and maintenance services for some communities. AV consulting, equipment purchasing, and installation services for city facilities, meeting rooms as requested. Executive Director Services for the Greater Dayton Mayors and Managers Association, and access to drone services. Some recently completed special projects include construction of an oversight of a forty-four mile fiber ring that connects seven of the eight member cities, resulting in enhanced technical capabilities and cost savings for internet services. Coordinated, the purchase of an armored rescue vehicle for use by the TCU SWAT team. They've added high-definition and closed captioning services to the four access channels, and they have developed and implemented an electric aggregation program for fourteen local communities. I want to send my thanks out, because the executive board director, Jay Weiskircher, and his staff worked really hard to create and have these things accomplished, and that's all I have.
I think, I think that deserves a hand.
I would also like to remind, tell everyone, National Night Out, everyone to come, it's a state, and it's a lot of fun, and also I'd like to, again, give my congratulations to our new lieutenant that we just wore in tonight. I would also like to thank the Miami Valley Communications Cable Council for broadcasting this meeting live and as well as any future rebroadcast. This regular council meeting is adjourned at six thirty-six.